All right, it is 2:38. We're going to reconvene. So next we have Bill 21-0021R, informational hearing, building a homegrown public safety cadet program for the purpose of inviting the police commissioner of the Baltimore, Baltimore Police Department, the fire chief of the Baltimore City Police Department, the director of the Office of Emergency Management, the sheriff of the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the police chief of the Baltimore City School Police, the director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the director of the Department of Human Resources, and the head of the Baltimore City Public Schools, Public School Systems Career and Technology Education Program to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the Baltimore City Fire and Police Departments, Explorer Programs, Youth Work Programs, Cadet Programs, College Internship Programs, the success and opportunities with local recruiting and hiring initiatives, and establishing the best method to create a pipeline of homegrown talent in the Baltimore City Public Safety Agencies. This bill was introduced on February 22, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Burnett. I'll open the floor to words from the sponsor, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Burnett?
Sorry, I'm here. A computer froze, I couldn't like unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues and staff from all of the agencies that have joined us today. So this, I think, flows right in line with the last hearing around the recruitment of women and retention of women in public safety. This really just focuses on young people, our youth. And the idea being that if we can really create a robust pipeline from Baltimore City Schools into careers in public safety, whether that be the Fire Department, Police Department, or Emergency Management, we're creating another opportunity for our young people to thrive, to engage in careers in public service that pay well, that have pensions, and most importantly, that give back to the city that they're growing up in. And so I keep my remarks pretty short, so we can jump right in. I know we have a number of presentations on these programs, but you know, just again, reiterating the importance of a pipeline of young people, so that both the agencies, Fire Department, Police Department, are also more reflective of the city of Baltimore when we talk about, you know, living in Baltimore, being people of color in these jobs, which is critically important. And so with that, I'll take a step back, Mr. Chair, and we'll jump right into the agencies.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. With that, we'll jump right into the agency reports. Please state your name as we announce each agency. First, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department, and we stand by our report and support and approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Next, we've got the Baltimore Police Department.
Mr. Chair, Michelle Wortsbruder, Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. And sir, I need to ask you, we have a similar presentation that we have prepared, but I want to know how you'd like us to proceed. We can abbreviate it if you'd like, and there are two things that I would like to highlight. And so what we'll then do is we will have Major Bartonis talk about the cadet program in the department. Then we will, if you don't mind, show a very, very, very brief video about the Explorers, and then Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown will take over and talk about the Explorers program itself. And if that is okay with you, sir, if you all could provide me with the ability to share my screen.
Michelle, what we're going to do first, I'm just going to get through the other agencies and then come back around to you guys, and then we'll get. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next up, we've got the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Executive Assistant Chief Roman Clark. We are in support of this Council Bill 21-0021 Resolution. And as we move forward with it, I will have the Equity Officer, Chief Equity Officer Kim Washington will speak to this bill again. Thank you very much, and thank you, Councilman Burnett, for your support on this bill.
Thank you, Chief Clark. And do you guys likewise have a presentation or anything like that?
I will defer that to Kim Washington. I don't believe it's a presentation. I think she's just going to speak on what we're doing as we are moving forward in trying to obtain the residencies and young people within the city to get them into the department.
Okay. So what we'll do, we'll do likewise with the BPD. We'll circle back to you guys, and we can dig into it after that.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we've got the Department of Human Resources.
Good afternoon, once again, Mr. Chair. We support this bill, and we submit on our written response.
Thank you, Director Herbert. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Jennifer Malady, Deputy Director of the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you, Jen. Did you guys have a bill report or anything like that?
We did submit a bill report, and I have a statement that I could read. Otherwise, I'll defer to Ms. Washington from the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Baltimore City Public School System.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Pfeifer. I'm the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness here at City Schools. I'm pleased to be here with you. We also sent in a written response. We are in support of this and have had very many productive conversations with both the Fire Department and the Police Department, and look forward to continuing.
Thank you, Ms. Pfeifer. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Employment Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council. My name is Mackenzie Garvin. I'm the Chief of Staff at MOED. We have provided a written response, but I did want to highlight that we are in full support of any opportunity to connect Baltimore City residents, especially our youth, with any city agency, especially our public safety agencies. In our report, our written report, we did highlight the great partnership that we have with the Baltimore City School System, and I would just like to recognize Dr. Pfeifer and her team for that great partnership. And we also highlighted some other activities that we have engaged in with fire and police, but just like with any partnerships or collaborations, those can be strengthened, and we're committed to strengthening those. I also did want to just highlight a few initiatives that are going on right now. Over the past several years, MOED has engaged in several demonstration initiatives. We've spoken about them a few times at different hearings, one Baltimore for Jobs, also grads to careers, and Dr. Pfeifer could probably speak about this more intelligently than I can, but that particular initiative is a collaboration between MOED, the City School System, and Baltimore Promise, where we are identifying young people who are not seeking post-secondary education while they are in school, providing them with supports and connecting them directly to occupational training. And initiatives like this, there are always opportunities to explore other sectors and determine ways that it could be replicated or scaled. I also want to highlight the Baltimore Health Corps Initiative. And the reason I wanted to highlight this one, it's very similar to what we were talking about here in terms of working with a city agency to not only think about resolving a hiring issue, but also basically a public health issue. We're talking about safety. And so we're engaged in that initiative with the Baltimore City Health Department. Currently, there is an employment crisis, but there also is a public health crisis. And over the last year, we've created the Baltimore Health Corps. We have successfully hired, I want to say, around 300 people who are currently working at the Health Department. On the MOED side, we provided recruitment and screening, referrals to the agencies. We also are providing career navigation services, digital literacy. We're working with other partners for mental health and legal services. And all of that is to say what we can do when we have the collaboration from our employer partners, from our sister agencies. And so we are willing and committed to look at existing initiatives that have shown promise and to pull best practices or replicate or scale. But I just want to note that we are committed to working with our city agencies to connect young people to employment opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. I really appreciate that. Next, we have the Sheriff's Office. Is there a representative from the Sheriff's Office on the line? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report and defer to the agencies on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. I'll circle back to the Police Department. Michelle, if you have your presentation, you'd like to begin?
Let me get set up real quick. All right, can you all see it? Okay, all right. I'm going to turn it over to Major Bartonis.
Thank you, Michelle. Good afternoon, Chairman. Thank you for inviting us today. I'm going to be very brief in our presentation as I know there are a number of agencies scheduled today on this topic. The cadet program is, of course, recruited by our recruitment section, but the education and training section, of which I am in charge, administers the program once they are onboarded. We currently have six cadets who are members of the BPD. They go through essentially the same hiring process as our police officer trainees, which helps the transition move quite smoothly once they've completed their two and a half-year program as a cadet. And once they reach the age of 20 years and six months, they're able to matriculate into the academy and complete the 30-week entry-level training academy to become police officers. We have a partnership with Baltimore City Community College, and it's called the Apprenticeship Program. It requires our cadets to be enrolled in six credit hours per semester. These are the list of courses that they take, and they earn up to 19 credit hours as part of this program. One other thing I'd like to mention is Dr. Gary Cordner and I, Dr. Cordner is the academic director. I work with it at Education and Training. We're developing a partnership with BCCC so that all police officer trainees, as part of their 30-week entry-level academy, will earn 45 credit hours toward an associate's degree. And we believe this, too, will be a very strong benefit and incentive for our young people in Baltimore to join the BPD. Certainly, if someone were to combine those 45 credit hours along with the 19 credits they earned as a cadet, they'd be well positioned to already have their associate's degree and would be a great springboard to pursuing the bachelor's degree from one of the many other universities available to them. And then the next slide gives some of the assignments that our cadets fulfill in the program. The cadets change assignments every three months, the goal being to expose them to a number of experiences in the Police Department and get a better understanding of the opportunities available to them if they choose to become police officer trainees and then ultimately, police officers with the agency. Helps them develop some interests and a clear design on a career path. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me just for a moment, I'm going to show the video about the Explorers, and then we'll have Lieutenant Colonel Brown talk further about the program.
That's great, okay. We can't hear.
I think we've had that problem before, and I'm not sure how to fix it. So what I will do is in my follow-up, when the follow-up items I send to the committee, I'll include the link to this video and a few of the others. So with that, I will adjust and bring up our slides for the Explorers program and turn it over to Lieutenant Colonel Brown.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and all of our council people. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity today to talk about our Explorers program. As you know, we are trying to develop a healthier pipeline for our recruitment efforts and definitely try to, you know, tap into our young people who do have an interest in law enforcement, but not necessarily just on the enforcement uniform side, but to also give them some opportunity to see all of the behind-the-scenes work that we do. It's a great way for us to try to cultivate our young people on a positive pathway, also with a career path, again, in law enforcement. But it also gives us the opportunity to engage with our young people in ways that we probably would not, you know, have that time to slow down with them and definitely be able to talk to them more about what police do day-to-day and our operations, and also in other, you know, aspects of the job. So right now, currently, we have about 40 active Explorers. We have three schools that we are very active with, and we have some of our training that is there as well. As you see here, our schools is National Academy, Foundation, NAF, Patterson High School, and St. Francis Academy. But we also teach curriculum, so it's not just all about law. Our curriculum has a wide range of character development. You know, it talks about violence prevention. We go into domestic violence, outbullying, street violence, gangs. And we also talk about sex trafficking. Even in our leadership, we teach them what leadership is and how leadership should look. But it also allows us to talk about diversity, you know, have these very hard conversations that we are seeing that's popping up in our communities even right now with a lot of those tensions. But it also allows them to have community service, which they are able to get those credit hours that allows them to graduate, but also puts them on a career educational path. With the biggest goal is trying to get them to now transfer over to become a cadet. Ultimately, once they become a cadet, to come into this side of law enforcement, which they are able to aid to the program. So right prior to COVID, we had about, we had a great synergy that was going on in our recruitment efforts. COVID pretty much, you know, took us away from the world, didn't allow us to have this face-to-face engagement with our young people, and staying, you know, really engaging, had a different trend for us, you know, in all of our COVID-related engagement and how we were. So now what we're looking to do is bring back some more of this, you know, recruitment efforts, revamp it up with this video with the commissioner, who just, you know, he just did this interview. We're going to use this in some of our recruiting efforts, because what we're learning, there are a lot of our homegrown kids, you know, from Baltimore City and definitely in our schools. And I believe we may have two of our Explorers who may have ventured over to our cadet program, about two or three, I think, as of 2020 into this year as well. And I think the biggest part is just letting them know that, hey, listen, we are human as well, you know, but we also teach them a lot of different aspects into life and not just so much as just only policing. Teach them how to just be, of course, good citizens. But the better part is bringing them into that pathway for, you know, employment or career in law enforcement. And so as I mentioned before, we did have some good synergy right before COVID. COVID kind of dampened some of our efforts, so we will be revamping that up. We do still have two districts that have always been very, very active in their troops. This would have allowed us to have non-troops, which we have not had for a series of time over a very period of years since I've been here. I've only known really the southeast and the northeast, who's always had very active membership. So the goal is to have all nine of those troops eventually with more active, you know, more active troops. So we will be starting up again as the city continues to open and all of the, you know, we're able to have this more face-to-face engagement with our youth, especially through Rex and Parks, because we use some of those facilities as well with some of our training, because we do teach them some of the things that we do. They normally compete. We have not been able to do that in the last couple of years because of COVID. You know, they go to a national conference, and they like that type of stuff. So we're looking forward to not only engaging them virtually, because that's most of what we've been able to do throughout three schools, but to also get face-to-face with them in our engagement.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. Mr. Chairman, that is our abbreviated presentation. Our team stands ready to answer any questions you or the committee may have.
Thank you, Michelle. And I'll kick it over to the Fire Department for any discussion that they want to have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. I'm going to turn this over to Chief Shiloh.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and councilmembers. We currently have a partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools through a CTE pathway. There are four participating schools currently. COVID has been quite challenging for us over the past year with the kids doing virtual learning. The CTE pathway is EMT firefighter, and the EMT corps is very hands-on. So there's many components of it that have been very challenging for us through COVID. Our discussions with city schools have still been very robust, even though the students have not been in person. We do have, we've had some conversations about some different programs that we're looking at, the possibility of entering into Apprenticeship Maryland, which is with the Department of Labor. It's a state-run apprenticeship. It's a paid apprenticeship that we can open to all schools. It wouldn't have to be exclusive to our four high schools that are in the CTE pathway. So that would open it up citywide to other schools. We're just looking into that now. We're having conversations with the Department of Labor over that right now. Our pathway from this high school program into our department would be as community aides. That's a part-time, paid position, 30 hours, with the hopes of bringing them into the Fire Department as full-time employees eventually. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Chief Shiloh.
I'm sorry. And I'm also going to turn it over to Jen Malady to talk about OEM.
Thanks, Kim. So OEM wants to be more engaged in community activities. And so along the lines of this process with the cadet program, we would like to, once a month at the beginning, and then hopefully add more days, be out in community locations where we can encourage kids who need their community service hours for school to join us in our outreach efforts. We're hoping to build a powerful recruiting mechanism that way that could be a model for the city. And we also believe in this cadet program. We believe that it could be successful and that we just really need to be in the community and engage the kids and encourage them to look at emergency management as a career. And we'd also really like to be able to establish those relationships with schools and the resiliency hubs located in those areas in order to build on a gateway to success for this program. So that's how we see that starting. And then I could probably talk about this for three hours if the committee wanted to, but that's about how we see it starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else, Kim?
No, Mr. Chair. I'll just say that just generally, related to community engagement and involvement, we are ramping back up in terms of going out in the community, outreach to community associations. That was part of what we started in 2015 with regards to recruiting members generally for fire service. But, you know, we are looking to do that as we get, I guess, more vaccinated here and we get more engaged. We are looking to continue our outreach. We think that's sort of the best way. When we look at equity, we're looking at it both internally, but also how we outreach to our communities across the city. So that is something that we are absolutely doing. And like Chief Shiloh said, you know, we are exploring, working with the state of Maryland. We think that will help boost the number of young people that we will be able to engage. That's it, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. With that, I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. And I want to first start by questions from the sponsor. Councilman Burnett, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all who have presented. This would be a general question for both Fire Department and Police Department. How many positions does each agency have budgeted each fiscal year specifically for your individual cadet or youth pipeline and program?
Going to have Deputy Commissioner Jim Gillis.
Councilman, thank you for that question. Jim Gillis here. I actually need to look in. I need to find out the number for you. I will, right now during this hearing. I don't know the specific number off the top of my head. And so I will be back in one minute after I go into workday very quickly.
Lisa would be able to answer that for us.
Good afternoon. We don't have any actual budgeted positions, but as Chief Shiloh referred to, the community aide positions, they are temporary positions, so they are available to us to hire into. So depending on the number of students that may come out of the high school program, we're allowed to hire as we need.
Okay. And I'll look for the follow-up for BPD on this one. My second question, Mr. Chair, and again, this would be an estimation. Without budget restrictions, what is the maximum number of cadets that your agency has the capacity to manage each fiscal year?
Councilman Burnett, this is Chief Ford. We've talked about the optimal number, and we think the optimal number is around 20 for us. We've covered that specifically talking about bringing them in as community aides, because we have many more that are inside the high school program. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to seek opportunities inside the Fire Department, because we've had, I know I've had a couple of young ladies who have gotten scholarships and have gone off to college and have a return. So it's based on that perspective.
And I guess the same for BPD?
Councilman, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that question real quick?
So it's a capacity-related question. Without budget restrictions, what is the maximum number of cadets that your agency has the capacity to manage?
Yeah, I will turn that over to Major Bartonis. Is he still on? Did he get kicked off?
No, I'm still on. I think we have a substantial ability to manage cadets. You know, really, it's a matter of where we can assign them in the agency. We have currently about a dozen commands that are well-suited for various cadet positions. And given that we're only at six, we could very, very comfortably quadruple that number.
And Councilman, this is Jim Gillis. If I could just add to Major Bartonis. You know, for us, the cadet program is a pipeline for hiring police officers, and that is fundamental to the overall mission of the agency. We need more sworn strength. And so we would accommodate whatever we can get to get into that pipeline essentially for hiring. So basically what Major Bartonis said.
Got it, thank you. I'll hold off the rest, Mr. Chair, if there's that question.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. I'll ask a question. Annually, how much of your, for both police and fire, how much of your budget is going towards youth works employment? how much of your budget is going towards youth works employment?
Councilman, this is Jim Gillis again, and I do not know the specific number, but we will get that information for you, absolutely.
Appreciate that. And then sort of as a piggyback to that question, each year you get youth works interns. What, what strategies do you employ to attract and keep those folks into your Cadet Program? Is there a concerted effort to sort of help people matriculate from one program to the next where we see that, that talent and opportunity?
Chief Shiloh can respond to this. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you repeat that?
So each year, you, you bring on youth works interns. Is there a suite of strategies or any concerted effort to help those folks matriculate into the Cadet Program? To help them essentially, you know, build up to hopefully one day working with the department?
So with the kids who do come in through work, youth works, we show them different areas of the agency, the Fire Marshal's Office, Communications. It's, it's more of a tour of the agency. And then they're given information as far as being in that CTE pathway and how that works coming into the department after they graduate from the CTE program. But it's a very short window in the summertime for them. So there's not a lot as far as instructional hours that we give them, but we do show them all aspects of the department.
Sir, for the Police Department, Colonel Briscoe is going to answer this question.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for that question, Councilchair. So for the Police Department, I can tell you every summer prior to COVID, we onboarded quite a few youth works, and they were done in sessions. So in the first session, we would disseminate that throughout the agency. And I can tell you when I was in the Western District as a commander, my three summers there, we actually brought them to the district and ran a youth-led program to basically break the barriers and build better relationships. So not only do we take them on a tour, like we take them to see the lab and the other cool neat things, if you will, that they think policing is all about. And we also set up some kind of, some, some talk situations, like lunch conversations with officers, to break down the barriers. So it's not just only about putting them to work, if you will, and giving them an understanding of what it is to walk into adulthood through working, but it's really about, it was really for us about building relationships. So I led that program at a lesser rank quite a few summers, and we would share the information, we would have an opportunity to engage with parents, and we would take them on tours. That's what we would do to try to matriculate them through coming into the organization. Unfortunately, I do not have any statistical tracking for my tenure at, at the Western, but I do know that we still stay, the district still stays engaged with some of those young people that they brought on during those summers. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does, and I appreciate that. I know I asked some, some difficult questions to, to answer, and I look forward to responses from both Police and Fire on one where that, that youth works budget is and, you know, beginning to flush out how we can help folks sort of grow in those roles and not just have it be a flash in the pan. I want to open the floor to other questions from the committee. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, and also agencies. Thanks for your time today. It was mentioned earlier about the CTE and how this, how it connects with the Cadet Program. Can, do you, what, which schools is this connected to? Or do you want it to be connected to, I guess, given the CTE program?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. So as, as the council is aware, we have just recently made some changes to our CTE programming. So I'll share both where we are currently and where we're going. So currently, our Fire EMT programs are at Dunbar, Patterson, Frederick Douglass, and Vivian T. Thomas. As part of our new career readiness plan, we have decided to sunset the Douglas program as of school year 2324. And this is in conversation with the Fire Department. Part of what we are trying to figure out is how we can not spread ourselves so thin, but really focus on, you know, having a slightly smaller number, but really being able to go deeper with the students who are there. Again, I appreciate Chief Shiloh raising the Apprenticeship Maryland opportunity that we're in discussion with the Department of Labor about as well, because that provides another opportunity for students who may not have time in their schedule to do a four-course, three-year pathway, but could still take the time to get the 450 hours of paid training that comes through that apprenticeship program. For the, for our Homeland Security Criminal Justice Programs, they currently are in, at Reach Partnership School and at Patterson High School. Again, as part of our new career readiness plan, we are sunsetting the Patterson program as of school year 2324. But, and again, that date is to allow students currently in the program to complete the program and to move all the way through. But part of what we've done is we actually maintained funding for a teacher position, even though we're going to sunset the program. We really want to work with the Police Department and have had some, some really passionate conversations with the Police Department about what this could look like, that maybe the, the four-course, three-year pathway is not necessarily the only way that we could get students through in a pipeline to the Police Department through the Cadet Program. And so we have allocated a staff position to really help think through that to continue as a liaison with the Police Department so that we can develop something that is new and perhaps a little bit stronger.
Thank you. That, that's helpful. Reach is in my district, so it's nice to know that Reach is part of this. And I guess that goes, that does flow with my next question about, you know, some of the, you know, I think we've all been talking about ways to, to get, you know, young people into this program. Aside from sort of marketing and what you had just talked about, you know, in terms of Ms. Pfeiffer, new ways to kind of get kids into the program. I mean, and then Chief Ford mentioned that they had, they had some young people, and then they decided to go to college and not stay and not come back and do the program. So what are some of the, the other barriers that you're seeing that need to be overcome?
I certainly welcome my agency colleagues chiming in on this as well, because I know they're seeing it from their seats. But I know that one of the things that we have discussed is, you know, students' academic levels. And sometimes what happens is that students are not at an academic level where they are able to kind of be able to thrive in these programs. And so that's something that we know we need to address. Another way that that has an impact on students, which might be less obvious, is that if a student is behind academically, at some point, the school recognizes that they may need to focus on, on some of the other graduation requirements in order to, to reach graduation. And so they may be pulled from some of their CTE classes as a result. And that's something that we are working through, right? But it is something that I want to acknowledge has happened and that we, we are trying to address. I do know that, that use of marijuana becomes a challenge, and that's something that we recognize and that the Explorers Program in particular has tried to address by connecting with young people earlier, because that's something that is hard to spring on a young person, right? Who might have made a variety of different decisions. You know, if, they, they need to know early enough to, to make some different decisions. And so that's something that we've wanted to be clear about so that it doesn't feel like it's coming out of left field for young people or coming after they've already made decisions that they might want to change. Beyond that, I think that there's still, you know, the exposure opportunities are, are really important, and I just appreciate the way that the agencies have provided those. And I think we also, in some ways, can't provide, like, we, there's always more we can do. And so we look forward to continuing to partner on those so that students see these opportunities as real pathways for them. But again, I defer to my agency colleagues as well.
If, if I could just touch, just for a moment, on that in terms of the marijuana use, one of the things that was included in the Police Reform Package this session in Annapolis is a provision that prior marijuana use cannot be a barrier to hiring. That was something that we absolutely supported. Currently, in order to be hired, you have to have not smoked marijuana or ingested marijuana within the last 36 months. So this is, you know, this will be a huge game changer, we think, for us. And so I, I just wanted to raise that issue for the committee. That, that will help.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. I want to clarify, does that, has that changed at all for the Fire Department?
This, this was just for Police.
Sure, and for the Fire Department, do we, do we then hold cadets to a similar standard for hiring?
Yes.
So i- if, if in the, if in that instance, we've got a cadet who is 17 and is unable to become a cadet, even though in three years at 20, they would then not, not fall within that period, would it be appropriate to then still hold them out for maybe that decision? Or is that something that we can reconsider?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Chief Ford. Are you asking in perspective if wasn't that they've used marijuana in the past three years? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay, right. I, I, Chief Clark?
Yes, sir, I'm here. In respect to that, Mr. Chair, what we do is when we bring these young people in, as they are coming into the department, they go through a physical. And within that physical, we do a drug test at that point in time. If they are negative at that point in time, then there's no problem. We will bring them on into the department. What they've done in the past would be their past, and they need to know that their future must remain clean once they're become within the department.
Got it. That's crystal clear. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Burnett, yours.
So wanted to, to, this is actually, and I'm not sure, do we still have someone on from the Law Department?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. So this question is just really around the, the, I guess, how far our legal authority goes. And I can follow up with an email with this if you don't have it offhand. But the Washington DC Fire and Police Cadet Programs require youth and young adults to be residents of that jurisdiction to participate in the program. On the city, at the city council level, do we have the legal authority to mandate that as a requirement?
It's probably doubtful. You remember, DC is a federal entity. They're not, they're not us, they're both their own state and city. So there are really bad comparison jurisdictions for stuff like that. But in general, normally, the ability to do kind of a, a local hiring has traditionally been done by the state. And we've been given some recent permissions to sort of expand things, but it's usually at the state level.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that. And the, the follow-up question or next question is for the, the Fire Department. Chief Ford or someone, a member of your staff, can you give us the, the current status of the Fire Department's EMT school and how it's structured?
This is Chief Shiloh. When you're saying EMT school, I, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. The, the partnership that we have with city schools, it's the EMT firefighter pathway through CTE. So that, that's the only schooling that we have right now.
So my understanding is, as a follow-up to that, was that previously, from 2015 to 2018, there were a little over 100 youth that came through a MT, EMT school program, and 25 were hired into the department. So I guess it sounds like that, that program isn't active right now, I guess?
That would, that would be the community aid position. That was referred to earlier, the 30-hour, part-time, temporary position.
Okay. And I guess, can you provide us an update on how many youth were hired in the last few years through that program?
In the, in the last few years, we've had 17 who came out of that program that we hired. And all 17 have, they're still employed with the, with the department. So they come directly out of the CTE program. Once they're successful there, they come into the department. But like I said, the last year has, we've had problems because of COVID.
No, that makes sense. I had one more, Mr. Chair, but I can, I can hold off for other members.
Any other questions from other members? Seeing none, go for it.
Perfect. This is for Police Department. For the Cadet Program, are the cadets held to, and I think you may have touched on some of this, so my apologies if there's any duplication in the question, but are they held to the same hiring standards as police officer candidates? Specifically, like the written and physical exam background? We did talk a little bit about the drug tests already, but I guess where are the over, what kind of overlap exists between those two?
Oh, yes, sir. The cadets do follow the same process as sworn police officers, with the exception of the cadets do not submit for the psychological evaluation. So once the background investigation is completed and the background is approved to go to the medical and psychological portions of the hiring process, the cadets do submit for the medical examination, which includes the, the drug screen, but they do not submit for the psychological evaluation. They will submit for the psychological evaluation once they transition to police officer trainee when they're age-eligible.
Got it. Thank you for that. And sorry, Mr. Chair, one more, one more. This is, sorry. All right. This is for, and this is, again, all free to jump in. I would direct it to the, to city schools and OED, but all, you know, who want to answer. I guess, just really, if, if folks can help us understand the synergy between Office of Employment Development and Youth Works in particular, like, are we recruiting for the young people that are participating in Youth Works at the Police Department, at the Fire Department? Are they, is there a central database that likes funnel these young people in and use them for recruitment purposes and try and create a pipeline that way?
So from the city schools' perspective, and then if Mackenzie is still on, would, would love for her to jump in as well. We have a work-based learning team that's a relatively new addition to our team in the Office of College and Career Readiness. They are a team of four who are working really closely with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development and with our schools to help share opportunities with young people. And so they have worked with MOED on a lot of the recruitment for opportunities during the summer and, you know, really ensuring that students are getting signed up for Youth Work so that then they can get placed in those opportunities. What we also have been doing is working to match students with their interests, right? And so that has been new work that we've done with MOED over the past couple of years is to, you know, really try and connect what students get as their work, their Youth Works placement with areas that they have shown interest in, that they have, you know, with areas that they have shown interest in, that they have, um, you know, that they might be in a CTE pathway for, so that we can give them more work experience in areas, um, of interest and training. Um, so, so I think there are additional opportunities for us to continue to connect. We're actually in the midst of working with our legal departments to get an MOU to share more data, um, across our, uh, across city schools and MOED so that we can do more tailoring for specific students. I think that another opportunity for growth, just in listening to, um, the conversation this afternoon, is for us to really think through the, um, and, and make sure that we as a district are following up with the young people who attend camps during the summer. Um, you know, so that we have the, the right, uh, legal, uh, guidance in place so that we can share those student names and information so that we can make sure that school counselors and others are following up with the young people who are involved in these summer camps and maybe the middle grades to make sure that in their school choice process, they are choosing the schools where they can continue their work in Fire EMT or, um, you know, related to the Police Department. Happy to pass it to you, Mackenzie.
Sure. And I, I don't have much to add. You summarized it very well. Um, we are working with, um, Dr. Pfeifer's office to identify the, the youth who sign up for Youth Works to connect them with employers or in their CTE pathway. So with everyone that comes through Youth Works, they give a preference about the type of work that they're interested in, and we try to connect the youth directly with those jobs, but, uh, specifically those who are engaged in CTE programs, we connect them with employers that are aligned with that program of study.
This is Jim from the Police Department, and I, I really don't have anything to add. I think that, uh, everyone else covered exactly that from our end. That, you know, it is an interest alignment, that, for the most part, where, uh, folks are tried to be connected somewhere within the agency where their interests lie. And then if something can flourish from that, we would try to pursue it, obviously.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll have a little.
Okay. Uh, any other questions from the committee? We will move on to public testimony. Do we have? I don't see any public testimony. So with that, um, is there a motion to move the bill favorable?
So move.
Or second?
Uh, moved by Councilman Porter, I believe?
Yep. Yes.
And seconded by Burnett. Conway? Yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Aye.
Glover? Glover absent. Uh, Porter?
Aye.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Uh, this bill passes with a vote of six to zero. Thank you, um, Councilman Burnett. Uh, with, with that, we'll, we'll actually hear this at the next, uh, council hearing. Council, uh, Councilman Burnett, before we close, is there any, uh, anything you'd like to say?
Uh, I just want to say thank you, uh, to the agencies, uh, for your hard work on this issue, both in preparation, uh, for the hearing as well as just the work being done, uh, to, to, uh, both preserve the existing work to engage young people uh, and your willingness to hear us out and, uh, to, to, you know, work to expand these programs so that we have real pathways, real strong pathways for, uh, youth in Baltimore City to, to go into these, these careers. And so, um, look forward to talking about this again soon. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and thank you all for, uh, attending today. And thank, thank you to the agencies that, that gave us all the context that we need to, to move forward on this. Uh, with that, this hearing is adjourned.